The time is now six o'clock in the Tuesday, January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Kingsport City Schools Board of Education Regular Business Meeting is now called to order. I think you have two young folk, maybe from Johnson Elementary, who are going to kick things off for us tonight, Dr. Tru.
I do, thank you very much. And I'm going to invite Stella and Jack Marshall to come up and join me. They are representing Johnson Elementary School. And Stella, we were talking earlier, you are in what grade?
Fourth.
Fourth grade. And who is your, you have multiple teachers, right? Who are your teachers?
Ms. Hale and Ms. Conken.
Okay. So if you are in fourth grade, let's just mentally go there. You're in fourth grade. What would you say would be your favorite thing to do while you're at school?
Literacy.
Literacy. And what about literacy is something you like? Why literacy and not something else?
Well, because it's my favorite and because it's easier to learn than the others.
Just kind of your thing? Nice. And Jack, we were talking about something literacy-related a little bit ago. Jack, who is your teacher, first of all?
Ms. Hughes.
Ms. Hughes. Now, you were telling me earlier about a special book that you read today. Can you share with our folks here what that book was?
About the Liberty Bell.
The Liberty Bell. And I think you had a great idea that we might want to run by maybe Dr. Hampton and your teachers. What was your idea about, that you kind of had in your mind after you read your book about the Liberty Bell?
We could go on a field trip on it to, at school.
So we want a field trip to see the Liberty Bell. So we may be passing out some permission slips here in a little bit, just to let everybody know, if you need a chaperone, you let me know, okay? We'll see what we can do. Okay? We're going to invite everybody to stand. You guys are here for, we're going to put you to work and do the pledge, okay? If you could stand and when you're ready.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Jack and Stella, we so appreciate you all being here, and we hope you have a wonderful rest of the semester at Johnson Elementary. You keep those people in line over there, okay? All right, we're counting on you. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to accept the agenda, which includes the consent agenda. Once the agenda is accepted, the board mutually agrees not to discuss any item of business or take any action that has not been accepted by the agenda. Is there a motion for approval?
Salute.
Second?
Yeah.
Okay. If you would cast your vote. So the votes have been cast and, okay, were you able to cast your vote? We're still working through some electronic things here. And the motion passes for O. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Brandon Fletcher, who is going to be recognizing some dual enrollment Fall 2024 graduates from Northeast State Community College.
Northeast State Certificate Programs and Career Academies allow high school students to complete a full program of study, ultimately leading to graduation concurrently from both high school and Northeast State Technical Community College. Career academies are located at the high schools, the Regional Center for Advanced Manufacturing, the Regional Center for Automotive Programs, and on the Blountville campus of Northeast State. Students typically begin a career academy during their junior year and complete the program by the end of their senior year. The Kingsport City Schools Board of Education would like to recognize eight Dobbins Bennett High School students who graduated from a certificate program at Northeast State Community College in December of 2024. So if you're here and when I call your name, if you would come up, Mr. Nathan Ambury, Auto Body, Allison Burke, Industrial Operations, Noah Parks, Industrial Operations, Parker DeFord, Industrial Operations, Ethan Dinsmore, Combination Welding, Jacob Lane, Combination Welding, Grant Liverman, Combination Welding, and Preston McMullins, Combination Welding. Congratulations, you all.
While these individuals move over to have their picture made, I'll just take the opportunity to congratulate them on this significant accomplishment and achievement, and to those at the high school who have supported them, and to their families for creating this opportunity. Congratulations.
Congratulations. We're so proud of you. So at this time, Jamie Jackson is going to recognize one of our All-State Girls Golf Athletes, Eliza Robinson.
The 2024 Class AA Girls Golf Championship was held at the Sevierville Golf Club Highland Course in Sevierville, Tennessee on October tenth and eleventh of this past year. And I have the privilege to let everyone here know that Eliza Robinson finished sixth place as an individual in the girls' golf state tournament, and she is being named All State. Coach Darnell could not be here tonight to be with us as we present this honor, but I, on behalf of him and the rest of your team and Dobbins Bennett and the Board of Education, we are so happy to present this honor to you tonight, and thank you for being a great representative. As Coach Darnell said, a great person and a leader both on and off the golf course. So congratulations, Elijah. Much deserved.
That is quite an accomplishment as a junior, so we look forward to seeing what happens next year as a senior. And I'm just going to stay right here to do this recognition. We are scheduled to recognize Mr. Leif Cook in the Dobbins Bennett Band Program, and he actually is at a boosters meeting and has kind of gotten held up. So we just wanted to recognize the Dobbins Bennett High School Marching Band for recently placing 10th in the 2024 Bands of America Grand National Finals, which took place in Indianapolis, Indiana on November sixteenth, 2024. The band is a five-time Bands of America Grand National finalist, and that basically means out of all the bands in the entire U.S. who come there to compete, the top 12 make it as a finalist. And I was, I will never forget, I was there the very first year they broke through to Grand National finalist status, and it was, it was quite something. I'll never forget it. So they're working very hard, and since then, in 2018, 2021, and 2022, they have been the Class AAA National Champion. The band has an annual enrollment of more than 350 students and has performed at all major performance venues and events available to high school bands, including five Macy's Thanksgiving Day parades, four Tournament of Roses parades, one presidential inaugural parade, and appearances by the concert bands in Carnegie Hall at the Midwest International Band and Orchestra Clinic. Mr. Leif Cook, Director of Bands, is in his 24th year directing the Dobbins Bennett Band. So on behalf of Mr. Cook and the bands, I'm sure they say thank you for the support, but we just want to recognize them and tell them to keep up the great work. So you can give them a round of applause, even in his absence. And now Dr. Philip Marshall is going to recognize our newly stated, awarded 2024-2025 State of Tennessee Principal of the Year.
It is my great honor and privilege to recognize Dr. Harold, Dr. Kelly Harold, from the principal at Adams Elementary. She is in her 21st year as an educator with five years in KCS. She previously served in Washington County, where she just so happened to get Principal of the Year there also in 2017, 2018. So this is kind of old hat for, old hat for her. She served as a principal at Ridgeview Elementary School and Boons Creek Elementary School, as an assistant principal at Boons Creek Elementary School and Boons Creek Middle School, and as a district RTI II coordinator. In addition, she has also served as mentor principal in the Governors Academy for School Leadership and the Tennessee Principal Pipeline Partnership. She holds a bachelor's degree in education from ETSU, a master's degree in education, leadership, and administration from Tusculum, an education specialist degree in educational leadership from LMU, and a doctorate degree in education leadership and policy analysis from ETSU. Again, it is my great privilege to recognize Dr. Kelly Harold, principal at Adams Elementary School, for being named 2024-2025 State of Tennessee Principal of the Year.
If I'm not mistaken, that is the third state principal of the year in about four or five years, three out of four. So pretty good odds here in Kingsport, USA. Really have some exceptional leaders and administrators, and we're so thankful for them.
And four overall, Dr. McPherson Sevier was also a principal of the year.
Okay.
Great company.
Absolutely. And...
First time you've had Teacher of the Year.
Yes. As Dr. Fletcher was mentioning, it's the first time in the history that the same district has had the state Teacher of the Year and the state Principal of the Year. So we're so proud of Ryan Kearns and also Dr. Harold and the work, the fantastic work that they continue to do. Thank you very much. Okay. Now is the time when members of the audience are invited to comment on agenda items. It's not the time to speak about personnel issues, as there are more appropriate ways in which these can be addressed. If you aren't sure how to do this, please ask a board member after the meeting. In your remarks, you may not refer to students by name without permission from the parent or guardian. If you would like to speak on a topic not included on the agenda, you're asked to submit your request in writing to the superintendent of schools at least three business days prior to the scheduled date of the meeting. If you would like to speak about an item included on the agenda for the meeting, it's requested that you state your name and limit your remarks to a maximum of three minutes. Is there anyone who wanted to speak on an agenda item? Okay. If you could just please state your name for us?
My name is Bill McClure.
Bill McClure.
And I'd like to speak concerning the school vouchers.
Okay.
That's permissible. We have lived in Kingsport for 55 years. Our children were educated at Kingsport City Schools. We are opposed to the school voucher program, at least as it's been presented currently. I think reasons for this, and I'm sure you've enumerated them also, it's public money for private schools via pass-through from students' parents. It's, in many ways, we feel a, where the wealthy will be given approximately $7,000 per student to perhaps attend schools like Baylor, Macaulay, Harpeth Hall, who aren't really accessible to the students that possibly are in, I would say, less worthy schools and where they need the help. We find that the accountability, that the standards as presented are different for public schools and private schools. They should be the same. They should have been the same for the preliminary voucher program in three counties. We don't see where there's been any great improvement in those test scores, even though the cross-section of the students going to those schools is not representative of the full student population in those three counties. Accessibility is not the same. Private schools can cherry pick students through admissions policies, perhaps picking the best students with the additional aid, and they, that will obviously help whatever test scores they run to. The schools, public schools have to, the private schools can more easily either suspend students or expel them for discipline problems or fighting or whatever. They can deny access. For example, special needs students who typically require more expenditures can be denied. So I think cherry picking is a real problem. And long term, while the proposed legislature, as I understand it, says that schools will be held harmless, public schools, as far as student aid, I think it's a case that many of our programs come out with ideals that sound good, but we find that over the years they're lacking, and that long term, I think, as this is proposed voucher program is passed, perhaps students could leave private or public schools in large numbers. And what that will do is, obviously, it could reduce the amount of courses that public schools are able to offer, such as AP or technical courses. Schools will be consolidated, because you won't be able to support the large public schools that you have now. Bus route efficiency will go down, and it will all increase to, and the percentage of special needs students as a total percentage of the total school population will go up. And those, as I said, those will require larger-than-average expenditures, so the average new student, average student cost per pupil will increase. Finally, overall, well, I think we have to ask the question, will the improvement of the total school population, both private and public, their learning and preparation to enter adult life be commensurate with the increased costs that will come to the state taxpayers? And I will pass on, we wrote last year when this bill came up, we wrote all our local legislatures, several legislatures throughout the state. We've got an acknowledgment of the receipt of our letter from one. We encourage you to vote against the school voucher program.
Thank you so much, and we will be covering this topic a little later in the meeting, so we appreciate you being here.
And I would ask the school board to encourage, what is the best way we can help you, if that is your...
We will speak to that. If you will, won't mind us hang in here with us for just a few more minutes, we are, we are going to discuss that at length. Thank you very much for being here, Mr. McClure. Okay. So with that, we'll go ahead and move to our business items, and one of the highlights of our year, I think, is this next business item from Ms. Jennifer Guthrie, and that is the approval of tenure recommendations.
Yes, thank you. This is one of the more fun things I get to do, and that's present you with some of our excellent teachers for tenure recommendation. We, in order to be recommended for tenure, of course, teachers have to meet the criteria under the statute 495503, and that does require that they hold a degree from an approved four-year college or career and technical license, have a valid teaching license in the state of Tennessee, have five years, not less than 45 months, in the district within the last seven-year period. The last two of those years have to be in a regular teaching position, not an interim position. And finally, they have to also meet a performance criteria of achieving what we call a Level Four or Five, which is above expectations or significantly above expectations. The top two scores on the level of effectiveness, the scores from the state, one through five, so they have to have a four or five in those last two years consecutively. So it is possible a teacher could go longer than five years if they don't quite make those scores and have to go a little bit longer. But that is the criteria that they have to meet. And so the teachers being presented tonight have met that criteria. We have invited people to be here tonight, but with no expectation of a mandatory attendance, because we do know that that can be hard on them. They've got family and other extracurricular and sports obligations and things like that, but we do have some teachers who were able to join us tonight. So if you are here in the audience, when I call your name, if you just stand for a minute and let the board know that you're here and be recognized for a second as I read these names. With Adams Elementary, we have Lindsay Carpenter and Alana Street, Dobbins Bennett High School, Nathan Bailey, Candace Birchfield, Charles Roden, James Scales, Patty Denmark, Stephanie Strickler, Kalen Tony from Dobbins Bennett. From Jackson Elementary, Philip Trammell, Keisha Ryan. And from Johnson Elementary, Hannah Hughes and Robert Ramsey. From Roosevelt Elementary, Tanya Warner. From Washington Elementary, Summer Hughes. From Robinson Middle School, Mitch Carter. And with our system-wide Special Education Department, Conley Smith and Sarah Perriman. That is our list of tenure recommendations, and this was, I should also note, eligible as of the end of the 23-24 school year, so as of the end of last school year, they became eligible. There is sometimes a delay in getting those in front of you all, because those level of effectiveness scores take some time to come out. They are often not actually produced until late in the fall, so that takes a little time to get in front of you all. But I present these teachers to you for recommendation for tenure, that they have met the criteria of the statute.
Okay. Any questions or discussion for Ms. Guthrie? Okay. With that, the recommended action then is to approve this recommended list of educators for tenure. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
And is there a second?
A second.
Please cast your vote. The votes have been cast, and that is unanimous approval. So congratulations, and thank you to those educators who have just received tenure. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So our second item of business tonight is actually the Kingsport City Schools Board of Education resolution opposing the Education Freedom Act scholarship and school vouchers. And so just for our listening audience and for those who are watching, I'm going to actually read the resolution, and, here it is. Just so everyone will know what this resolution says, and if possible, I'd like for us to have this on our website also, so it's always included in the minutes, those kinds of things, but just want to read this out loud. "A Resolution of the Kingsport Board of Education Opposing the Education Freedom Act. Whereas Article 11, Section 12 of the Constitution of the State of Tennessee requires the General Assembly shall provide for the maintenance, support, and eligibility standards of a system of free public schools, and whereas Kingsport City Schools is charged to provide a free and appropriate education for all students, regardless of background, need, or ability, delivering exemplary learning opportunities for over 100 years that ensure success for all children. And whereas Kingsport City Schools educates and serves every eligible student in our community who wishes to enroll. And whereas Kingsport City Schools has a long-established history of providing a wide array of nationally recognized academic, athletic, social, and arts programs through effective and strategic stewardship of public funds. And whereas the Kingsport Board of Education is committed to ensuring local control over our schools through transparency and accountability, reflecting the values and needs of the Kingsport community. And whereas the Kingsport Board of Education believes all educational institutions receiving public funds should have the same level of academic and financial transparency and accountability. And whereas private educational institutions do not face the same state-approved academic standards, transparency requirements, accountability methods, and performance measures as public educational institutions, nor are they required to accept all students and offer needed specialized programs. And whereas diverting critically-needed public funds to private educational institutions through vouchers or an education savings account threaten Kingsport City Schools' ability to maintain its exemplary quality of programs and services. Now therefore be it resolved that the Kingsport Board of Education unanimously opposes the Education Freedom Act and strongly urges the Tennessee General Assembly to reject such legislation and/or any other similar voucher or education savings account legislation that would divert public dollars away from public schools." And that will be dated today, January fourteenth, 2025. So this resolution has been drafted. All the board members have had an opportunity to see this and to, so at this time, I just ask if there's any discussion regarding the resolution itself. Any questions? I will add that I have asked Dr. Hampton, this resolution will go particularly to our local legislators, and I recommend that we send it statewide. I think it's important that not just the legislators in our district or our neck of the woods, so to speak, know how we feel about this, but that legislators statewide, because all the legislators can be voting on this. So Dr. Hampton is going to draft a cover letter, for lack of a better term, just to explain, in layman's terms, I have to admit, I'm not up on a lot of legal terms of the whereas this and whereas that, but I can tell you that I personally, and we as a board do oppose this legislation. We were able to have a very good meeting, I felt, on Thursday with several of the legislators. Some were not available to come, but we had six who were able to attend, and we had very good conversation with them, and we made a lot of points that really where the, it's just not a level playing field between public schools and private schools, and why we oppose the legislation. We are all for parent choice, and we feel that parents have a choice, but the way this legislation is drafted, it will have a negative impact on public schools. I'm a product of public schools. Most of the people in this room are products of public schools, and we have been elected to try to protect them as best we can. And so we're going to continue to advocate for public schools, and we encourage every person, every constituent in the district, or anyone who is listening, to reach out to legislators, just as Mr. McClure spoke of earlier. You have an obligation to do that as well. These are your taxpayer dollars that are being used. There are several things that are mentioned, the whole harmless. Basically, that's saying that our funding will not be reduced. What it's also saying is that we're paying for a student twice. If a student is, has been counted as a public education student, and they go to a private school, they're going to be paid in the public schools. school, they're going to be paid in the public schools, and they're going to be paid in the private schools. That, to me, is not being fiscally, not a fiscally sound practice. That's not being a good steward of public funds, and I don't know how long we can do that. I mean, we can, and the legislation doesn't say how long the hold harmless will be into effect. So there are several things that have been brought up, and Dr. Hampton, I know, will address these things in his cover letter. We'll try to make sure that that is easily accessible for anyone who needs talking points. And unfortunately, this past week, it has been reported that seven of the county mayors in this area have written a letter of approval for these vouchers. I will add that our own Sullivan County Mayor did not reach out to his Sullivan County Board of Education prior to signing that. He also did not reach out to the Kingsport City Schools Board of Education, nor anyone in Kingsport City Schools, to get additional information before he signed the letter showing approval and support for the vouchers. So as you can tell, I get a little passionate about this. I think I can speak for our entire board that our doors, the proverbial door, is always open, and we encourage you to reach out to us if you have any questions. But we will not go down without a fight because we believe in public education and the value that it provides to our students. And I want to say a special thank you to all the employees in our district, and just again say how much we appreciate what they do. And it frustrates me because we, there are times, you know, we were facing a teacher shortage, and yet we wonder why. And I think this is part of the reason why, because it is, to me, this is a slap in the face to our educators who are working day in, day out, trying to provide the best opportunities for our kids. So with that, I'm going to stop talking for a moment. Is there any other discussion?
Just to add on to that, depending on the news that you read, you may have seen that this has been connected with some other funding that would be affiliated with disaster relief, specifically in Hampton and other areas like that. And because we are against this bill does not mean we are against the relief that needs to be provided to those areas, but I think I can speak for all of us when we say that those two things are completely separate issues. And to me, lumping these two things together is political posturing and nothing more than that. So we are not anti-relief where it needs to go, but we are anti these two things being done together.
I'll take this opportunity to say thank you to the Kingsport's mayor. Mayor Montgomery attended our legislative breakfast on Thursday and voiced strong support for our school system, public education, and voiced his displeasure with the Education Freedom Act. And so I appreciate that he and several of our Board of Mayor and Alderman members also, though they weren't in the meeting, have individually expressed support. That was very comforting to know, that our city leaders understand the importance of public education, and they have demonstrated that for more than 100 years. And very proud to be associated with those individuals and who have, who stand in the gap on the daily to support the work that we do.
And I would just like to say, many of you know, I was a special education teacher, so I am 100% against this type of situation where my students, our special ed community are probably going to be stiff-armed from these vouchers. There's going to be very few opportunities for them in the private sector. And then even if they do go, they will not be receiving the level of support and care that they are receiving now in the public school system. So as a former special education teacher, I implore the special education community to let their voices be heard and support our special needs students that do need individualized care, which is what they're getting at the top and highest level in the public school system, and especially here in Kingsport City Schools. I think I can speak for, with Dr. Hampton, at the level of care and support our students are getting is probably the highest in the entire region for our special education students, and to take funding away from those students or to take opportunities away, to me, is egregious. So I would ask that our citizens think about that and support our special education students in the public school setting and keep our funding here.
I did not have the opportunity to be with the legislative breakfast when the political envoy was here to discuss this, and so had to get a lot of information secondhand, but I just wanted to share that I'm a product of public schools. It's, I hate that Mr. Herron left. He and I grew up one street apart from each other in Lynn Gardens, so a very underserved area. And I know what, I know what public schools did for me. I mean, I've said this before, I mean, God used a public school teacher to change the trajectory of my life. And I'm pro-public schools. If a parent chooses to send their child to a private institution, I'm pro-private school. I'm pro-education wherever it sees, wherever that family sees fit for that child. But I am not in support of this legislation. It, I believe it cuts the legs out from underneath what our teachers and our educators do. But even if I were in support of the legislation on its face, at its face value, I certainly would not support it simply based on the tactics that have been executed, the high-pressure tactics that have been executed to pressure local governments into supporting the bill. I actually had to have it told to me three times because I couldn't believe that there's a rumor that the legislation could be tied to disaster relief for our neighbors. I mean, it's, that is just the most egregious and disgusting thing that I can, I can't believe that that's coming out of the state of Tennessee. I just can't. I mean, I was simply appalled, and probably most were, when Hurricane Helene hit North Carolina, and you heard the stories of the FEMA bureaucrats skipping over yards because they had a Trump sign in them. You know, that, there's no difference. You know, some call it underhanded, some call it posturing. It's political extortion. So I stand in unanimity with this board in not opposing this bill. And so I'm proud to sign the resolution. And I just, anybody that would support those tactics to do that should be ashamed, absolutely ashamed, to hold our neighbors and our communities hostage for a political agenda.
Well said. Well said. Any other discussion or comments that would like to be made? Mr. Golden is not able to be here tonight. He actually is out of town for work, but I can tell you that he has expressed his opposition to this legislation as well. So we, as a board unanimously, well, we're going to vote, we need to vote, but vocally we have been in opposition. We are united as an entire board.
I've been a part of individual conversations with each of our board members, and will also thank you publicly for understanding the value that we bring as a public school institution and the potential harm that this legislation can do to not only our school system, but every school system in the state of Tennessee. So it's an honor to work with and for you, especially in the capacity that we've worked in most recently, and the fact that you stand in, you stand together in support of public education, and there's no divisiveness on our board. And so thank you for being loud and proud and representing that which the citizens called you to represent. Thank you very much.
Okay, so with that, is there a motion? The recommended action then is to approve the resolution opposing the Education Freedom Act Scholarship/School Vouchers Bill. Is there a motion for approval of this resolution?
I'll make a second.
Okay. If you would, cast your vote. Okay, all the votes have been cast, and the vote is unanimous, so the resolution passes. Again, I want to say thank you to Dr. Hampton and others who were involved in preparing for the legislative breakfast. The depth at which he can speak to so many things is very comforting to know he's leading our tribe here. And there were others who were involved in the conversation and certainly in the preparation. And I know I can speak for our entire board to say thank you for the countless work that has gone into that and that will continue to go into making sure that we try to protect our public schools. So thank you very, very much. Okay, so our next meeting is actually, it's a little bit of a change because of what's going on the week after that, but we, our work session will be next Tuesday, January 21st, at 6:00 here in this location. And then on January 28th, we are still on track to have the Buck Van Hoste Dome reopening dedication. So we hope everyone will plan to attend, come out and support our tribe at the basketball game. And our neighbors from across the state line in Gate City are going to be here, and it's just going to be a really fun night to reopen the dome and dedicate that facility and get our kids back in there doing the things that they love. So I'm so excited about that. Thank you to people who are just working like Trojans right now to make that happen. Also, on January 29th, we will be having budget presentations here in the Tennessee Room, so that is to begin at 8:00. And then our February, regularly scheduled meeting will be on February 11th at 6:00, and the work session will be February 25th. Some of us will be traveling the 10th and 11th to the Legal and Legislative Institute in Nashville. That is directed by TSBA, so we'll be going down there for the, and there will be much talk, I'm sure, but very interesting time on February 10th and 11th. Okay, is there any other questions or items for discussion? Okay, if not, the meeting is adjourned. Roll tribe.